All right, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
First item on the agenda is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 17, 2021. Item B, approval of minutes of the special meeting held June 15, 2021. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $169,454.31 and payroll expenses of $282,613.31. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item 6A is the Alba Hospital Authority meeting on May 25, 2021. Mr. Bowman, do you have a report to share with us?
Well, yes and no, because we have a meeting tomorrow, and I didn't bring my notes from the car. And I can state that the hospital is doing very well through COVID financially, and they're getting some doctors here. That's basically all I remember anyway.
Do you want the minutes or?
That would have been good to have.
Sorry.
From my understanding, the AHA was looking at the installation of some cameras and stuff a while back. Was that correct? Or was there any discussion of that in the minutes or meetings?
Not that I recall.
I believe you were there, if you don't mind speaking about that a little bit, if that's okay.
What, I don't know what.
Sorry, from my understanding, the hospital authority is using some of the PPE money to invest in better security cameras and access control at Homestead or Convalescent Home, or maybe it's just the shared medical center in general?
Convalescent Home?
Oh, okay.
Now, they've done it at the hospital also. They've been working there for some time. I think they were back today, working on it. But it's been a month or so ago where they come in, put cameras on the exterior and interior and everything, and worked for some time.
Hmm, it was just improvements of existing infrastructure or a brand-new system? I heard you mention it, and I just was curious about the process going on.
Well, I can speak regarding the convalescent home, that it was approved by the AHA months ago, and it's a system that hadn't been in place before, and it is capable of doing contact tracing.
Hmm, and any idea on the bid or the overall cost of the project?
The bids came in, I don't recall what the bids came in at, but they did not exceed the bid. The cost did not exceed the bid.
Okay.
Bank Central came in, did an excellent job for us. They bid the project, so did a couple others.
And I guess they had the lowest, the best bid of the local.
Yes.
I was curious about how that process unfolded. Thank you.
Well, I didn't do much, but I'll ask them about the cameras tomorrow.
Thanks, sure.
I will say, moving forward, we need to stick to the agenda items, though. If we're talking about meetings on certain dates, we need to stick to these meetings.
Should have pulled the consent agenda for those approved items from last time. My apologies. I'll make sure to do that next time.
Item B is the Alvarina Authority meeting on 6/1, 2021.
They did not actually have that meeting, or the cemetery board. Those two meetings did not occur, so I apologize. I should.
Item C is the library board meeting on June 7. Mr. Dowling, do you have a report for us?
I do. Business continues pretty much as usual. We will clarify this kind of at the end with Angelica's help, hopefully. It looks like we continue to mention the money that would be transferred out of the budget accounts to be the shortfalls. I gave a report on the previous council meeting, talking about the Northwestern Foundation Scholarship and the different zoning changes that we reviewed. The library report, the summer programs for the first, second, and sixth grade students are well underway. In fact, from my understanding of the last communication I had outside of that meeting, I think they're awful, and I've only heard wonderful things about the programs that the library is able to put on, I guess, except for the limited supplies they were able to cash with their budget. But fantastic program they do run, which hopefully at the end of this meeting, we might see if we can expand that capability. The library staff are preparing and have begun to open up to small groups. I think of two individuals at the time of the library. I think because of staffing requirements and their location, they've been very cautious, being very cautious in reopening. But other than that, I think they've done good, and they still need to file for some grants for some of the computer improvements that SPI installed or that they purchased from SPI. So that should be hopefully well underway by now, and they'll get approval for those grants, so they can, I guess, replace the funds that they used to pay for those car rides. Do you mind, the transfers out of the budget to account for those shortfalls? Specifically, the line items that I see that were there but now are not are the ones that are from SPI taken out of utilities? Is that kind of what she's mentioning as the transfers that need to make room for in the budget?
Not necessarily. So when we have the budget, we put the budget together, you know, it's our best guess of what our expenses are going to be for next year. And as expenses, you know, they may come in over or under what the guidelines that we set up are. And so if we have, as a whole, each department has to maintain their budget and has to balance within each department. And so, you know, they may have an area, for example, say utilities, where they had potentially more revenue there, or not more, excuse me, they didn't use all of their budget in maybe another area like professional services, where they did use all of their budget, and they're just transferring the excess budget out of one expense category down to the next, so that they're making sure that they're not over budget in any one particular area, but they're staying in budget within each department. It's a very common practice that happens, just because the budget, you're putting together 12 months' worth of expenses at the beginning of the year, and there's a lot of things that could happen between that. I just don't know what the revenue would be.
And that's what, I noticed that, well, all the way back into previous till 2016, it looked like that budget requirement was set for $10,000 out of that line item for years and years and years, until we get to more recent times, and then it spiked. And I saw earlier, when we talked about it in the last time, when you got me those reports, it looks like a lot of the overages that happened for this year came from those SPI bills that were paid, that you said were, we got the bills back in the previous year, but we were not able to pay them because they came out, the services were, I guess, rendered on the 6th, is from my understanding of how our conversation went, and then on the 1st, they were paid and taken out of that account.
Right, so we encumbered those expenses in the previous year, say, May, June, the previous year, and then we paid them in July.
And that's why, I think specifically those expenses, and I will ask you to just clarify and make sure I'm right, it looks like a lot of the overages that we are counting into the new professional service budget were because of those overages from previous years, because, yeah, their overage is about $2,000 to this point, a little less, I think it's $19 on the calendar year. But 2,000, it looks like we were budgeting for that occurrences, which from my understanding of discussion, was a unique item that shouldn't happen again. And I would suspect, since those were unique occurrences at the end of the year, we wouldn't need to budget for them moving forward.
So are you referring to the bills that we had that we paid that were unpaid at the end of one year and that we paid at the beginning of the next year?
Yes, the ones incurred on 7, yeah. Specifically, it looks like for the line item, the monthly management contract for SPI was billed at two separate times, about $1,099 and $1,108. I assume to account for previous expenses that they rendered in that previous year?
If I remember correctly, those were from 2020 encumbrances, and then we paid them in the next, like, we paid them in July of the 2020.
And from my understanding, using the revenue received in the 2020 year?
Yes, yes, they were encumbered in the 2020 year, so that's where the expense was incurred, and that's where the revenue was.
And I was gonna say, is it possible, then, to use that kind of forward thinking? Because you can see out of this line item now, since, I think, the 4th of this year, 4/1/2021, it looks like that fix has been accommodated in all those other SPI bills seem to be coming out of the utility account. If that's fine, it looks like we freed up some space in that professional service account in the hopes of, you know what I mean, adding to supplies, potentially in their budget line item, to account for some of these great summer programs that they do for kids.
So what Taylor is referring to is the fact that we have, some of the SPI bill is for our VoIP phones, and that bill was previously being paid out, being paid to AT&amp;T out of our utilities line item, and now we are paying that bill, or there was a timeframe where that bill was being paid off for professional services, and now we've reallocated that back to the utilities line expense as opposed to the professional services. So yes, it would potentially free up some revenue that could be, if needed, moved to a different category item.
Change the overall budget?
No, the overall budget would stay the same.
Yeah, it just.
Just re-categorizing.
Yeah, re-categorizing, because I assume, like, not being able to see what you actually spent because of those issues.
Yep.
So is that, what would it take to have that adjustment done, or is that simply, do we have to vote on that as a council, or can we just make that?
No, Sandra has the ability to make that change or something, or to request that change maybe, that's within court order.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we could clear that up to renegotiate some of that contract.
Does council have any questions regarding the library board meeting? Thank you. Cemetery board did not meet, if that's what you said.
They did not have a form.
They did not have a form, okay. The airport commission met on June 14, and we, well, unlike Greg.
Well, it's bad enough.
There wasn't a lot on the agenda. We did have, of course, our regular business and heard reports. The only discussion we had was regarding the fuel truck and the tractor needing some repairs. There was no action taken on those items. They were within the discretion of the business manager and the airport manager to address those things, so that's what has happened. But overall, airports are doing really well. They are looking at potentially some changes in their fuel, as well as their payment system to be more user-friendly and get more traffic in. We're getting a pretty good reputation for having the best rates around for fuel, both avgas and particularly jet fuel, so seen a lot of traffic because of that, and that's good. They're doing a flying in on Sunday mornings, most Sunday mornings, for pilots that want to come in and get donuts and coffee and whatnot and view our field. It's been pretty well attended since the weather's gotten nicer, and so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
One of the things that I remember being discussed about in the economic development committee was, from the county's perspective, the ability to bring in businesses' interest in the airport, I think specifically they mentioned military operations, to have an expanded runway. Was that brought up, or is something that we can bring up at the airport meeting at a later date, to kind of see if that's possible, the plan for that, kind of forward-looking?
That was not brought up.
Okay. No interest, I guess, then?
I didn't say that.
Oh, okay.
I said it wasn't brought up. Any other questions? Next item is the Albert Tourism Tax Commission meeting on May 19 and June 16. Mr. Martin?
I will report on both of those meetings. May, well, both meetings are pretty standard. May, we approved the Fourth of July show in the amount of $12,500. The June meeting, we approved the Nescotana Golf Tournament for $6,000. And then we also approved budgets, tourism's budgets, $155,000 for the year. Pretty standard meetings. If you'd like to answer any questions.
Did Nescotana kind of speak about what they were going to use that money that they requested for?
I mean, yeah, what they typically use it for every year, to operate.
The prizes and the expense of the country.
Same thing every year, operate a golf tournament.
A lot of times used for the meal and things like that.
Yeah, it's been going on for like 49, 50 years.
Yeah.
About the same thing every year.
Are there any other questions regarding the tourism meetings? Thank you. Next item is the finance committee meeting on June 21, 2020. Mr. Sherman?
Pretty routine meeting, went over the May report and financials. Notable large claims were accounting software fees of $12,420.34, bulk fuel on $11,104.8 and elevator repair, I believe, for the library of $5,600. To date, we have been billed and paid $12,976 for the petition audit. That does not include the May visit, and those total expenses are looking to be somewhere around $65,000 by the end of the audit. We have any answering questions?
Council have any questions regarding the finance committee meeting? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report, and I don't have much to report, been busy with committee meetings. We're gonna see a lot of that stuff on the agenda, so I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all have any. And city business managers?
I just have a few items to update on. We have begun work on the waterline project south of town. That has been going well. I know we had posted on Facebook that we did have, had to take two of the three lines that were coming from the well field down for a short period of time. Obviously, the one that we're working on continues to be down, but we do have two lines from the well field to town up and running. That was a busy day for everybody, trying to make sure we had enough water in town. We have been working with Northwest Electric to do some electrical work in our well field, adding some electrical boxes, so we can bring several of our wells that were offline over the winter time back online to help with the increased demand of water during the summertime, so that project is just about complete as well. And then we began concrete work on Flynn Street. Once it stays warm enough and harvest is over, we will get the asphalt laid there as well. Just kind of been a little bit of cool weather, and then harvest starting right when it was nice and hot and we could be laying asphalt. Didn't want to lay asphalt in the middle of truck route, so we should get that project wrapped up soon, hopefully. I didn't have a lot of the committee meetings on the agenda, and I apologize, we'll do that next time, but most of our committee meetings have resulted in some type of action that we'll be taking tonight, but I'll make sure those are on the agenda next time, so we can speak on each of those.
Does council have any questions?
Still gonna lay asphalt instead of cement or vice versa?
That is the plan as it sits, yes. There was concern about laying concrete, because that road is asphalt on either side, and there was concern about laying concrete there. They're doing concrete work down in.
The Goldwood.
In the Goldwood area, essentially putting a header wall in and doing some river slides and some work there, but as far as the road material, it will be asphalt across there.
Any other questions? Item 7 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Any citizens who'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes to be heard by the council, and we just ask you, please let us know who you are. Well, we're glad you're all here this evening. Next item is discussion and action to approve resolution 2021-005, adopting the general fund budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 as presented. As council is aware, we did have our budget hearing last Tuesday, and we did discuss in great detail the items that are on the budget that has been presented to you this evening or for approval this evening. I will make note that at the time of the budget hearing, it was anticipated that we would have the final rates for the healthcare insurance plan, and we don't have those final rates, and rather than do two budget amendments, or rather than amend it now before the vote, we just left it as it was estimated, and there will still be a budget amendment when we do have that final number. That, I think, was the only item that would have been relevant to what we discussed at the public hearing. So now it's our job to approve the budget. We do have until July 1st to get the budget, or, excuse me, June 30th, to get the budget approved, and so.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution.
I was gonna have a question.
I've got a motion by Mr. Winters, I believe.
I have a, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2021-005, adopting the general fund budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve resolution 2021-005, adopting the general fund budgets for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 as presented. Is there any further discussion?
I was gonna say, if there was interest, we discussed the agreement between the Alba Utility Authority and the Alba Hospital Authority, and the ability to take the utility bill, and we talked about the contract negotiation. While reviewing the current contract that we have in place, by adopting resolution 2021-006, according to Section 5, from my understanding, and then looking at the AUA and AHA agreement, Section 3.1.4, we approved the utility payments for the hospital by approving this budget in this line item. So if we can postpone approving this line item, we can negotiate the contract on its renewal in August.
The motion was made regarding 2021-005. Is there any further discussion? That's not even germane to this agenda item.
Oh, it was part of the overall budget. That would have been, I guess, under the proposed line item. So I guess that's what I was referring to.
This is the general fund budget.
Oh, okay, so we're not gonna approve the AUA budget yet, or?
We haven't had the AUA meeting yet.
I guess I apologize for jumping down there, but I guess we might well talk about that.
Can I ask a question? Some of these things Taylor's bringing up, we can amend the budget later on, once this budget is approved, correct?
Council can amend the budget during the course of the operating year.
It's like giving you a check and saying, hey, please hold on to it, no cash until later, but that's how I look at it, because we are agreeing to pay them, we have to amend the budget not to pay them, because.
What happens to us if we don't approve the budget by, you start getting fined?
You don't have any salaries to be paid, you can't pay the health, because you don't have the budget approved, you don't have any funds.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, specifically, well, we'll deal with it when the AUA comes available.
All right, please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 9 is discussion and action to approve ordinance number 2021-001, adopting the International System Building Code. Planning Commission read in April, Chief Miller, we'll have him available to answer any questions as well, presented information regarding the IUBC, and after that presentation, the planning commission believed that it would be good to take that on to the ordinance committee, which the ordinance committee also thought it would be good to go ahead and move that on up here to city council for approval. I will say that the conversation had been spurred by some interest in the business community for expanding their businesses and having some plans they'd like to kick off here pretty quickly, so there was an interest in having this approved, so that they could move forward with their plans and adhering to a more business-friendly code, but still safe for the community. The one thing that's not in the ordinance as an oversight was that normally, when we'd want something to go into effect quickly in order to help the businesses out, we would have had an emergency clause in that, and it was an oversight that that did not get included in here. I would like to go ahead and ask Chief Miller to be available to answer any questions from the council, but ultimately, I would like to table this and amend, or bring back a new ordinance with an emergency clause in it, so that it could go into effect immediately and start helping the businesses out immediately. And if we did that, I would want that to happen within a couple days. Does council have any questions regarding that request from me or for the chief regarding the IUBC?
I'd like to even have Chief Miller come visit a little bit too, but I've talked to some other councilmen too, that a lot of times, whether or not it's the city, or inspector, or Chief Miller, I mean, kind of gets a little bit of a bad rap, just because they're trying to follow the guidelines, and I asked him to bring some of his books, and he asked, I told him, says it's kind of show and tell, but some of his guideline books he has to go through, and some of these things, we just kind of, as things happen, we run into hiccups that would be, that is not gonna put anybody in danger or property or life near links, so Chief Miller has been, you know, been well, and I believe he did say, this is something that's gonna change here September, but there's at least three businesses that are wanting to expand, with the cost of a lot of materials and stuff, and if they'll be able to get some of the items, it's a bit difficult, so quicker they can get moving on a lot of these projects, and they'd like to know where they're at near links and be able to advance near links, so I guess it's a great deal that we can try to do to help them out, and it's beneficial.
That's council, whatever.
If you all want me to talk a little bit about it, it's perfectly fine. As you can see, this is a lot of reading material that you have to go through on each project, whether it's new construction or existing construction on it. You know, the building code's kind of how we set right now, if you don't understand building codes. The building code, or the International Building Code, actually tells you how to build the building. The building code and the fire code work cohesively together, because then we tell you what's gotta go in it for the safety aspect on the fire side of it. One good thing about the existing building code is that the city of Alma, in its nature, is historic. I mean, we've got a lot of old, older, older buildings. Now, in every situation, it's imperative that you guys know that in every situation that the existing building code doesn't help everyone on it. It gives us the opportunity to have a business that is established, that if they want to expand their building within a percentage, then they can keep the same safety measures as they built the building under at the time it was built. Now, probably some questions are. Now, probably some questions or things that are going through your mind, what if that building was built in the 1920s? It does give us some updated features for either exit signs or if it requires a fire alarm, depending on the use of the building, some direction of travel for egress routes, some different things like that that it does make you have to do. But you get alteration periods 1, 2, and 3 and they're based off of percentages and it is better for businesses or people who want to build, that are building friendly. Now, one thing that you need to understand, the Oklahoma State statute also comes into play, that if a building sells or changes the use of the building or that is setting dormant for 90 days, they do have to bring that building up to new code standards on it. So like I said, existing building codes helps in a certain situation and other situations that it doesn't. So I think it will be really good for the city of Alba, it'll be good for businesses, it'll be business-friendly and that's the reason why that I would like to see it passed through this council and help everybody out.
Brian, do you have enough, or you have, how many businesses do you have right now that are hoping that this is gonna pass to...
There's three businesses that actually have reached out and was wondering if it was gonna pass and before they do, it's actually detrimental to them whether they're gonna do their expansions or not. So this isn't something that's just come up. That's one thing that I, we talked about this for seven years. I've talked about it in committees for seven years since I've been fire marshal. You know, it's time to act on it. I mean, with the new council and an active council, you know, I think everybody would agree with me that we're wanting to see Alba grow, we're wanting to see businesses grow and this is a really good thing for us. This isn't something that's gonna hurt us on it.
Do you think any of these businesses are looking elsewhere if we don't get this approved right away?
At least one, at least one that I know of. You know, it's really detrimental to their business to expand, they need to expand. If we can help them, that would be great and this code would help them. I mean, they're here, they're active within the community, they want to be a big part of the community, as does the other two. I mean, they're also very active within the community also, but this one may uproot. So...
Just from my understanding at least, does it seem like this building code is less or more convoluted than the existing one? Because it sounds like the other one might have been more cut and dry, but to the detriment of...
No, we're not, we're not replacing. This is an addition to. So when you look at building code standards with the IUBC for new construction, how our ordinance is written right now, anything that you do in any building within the city of Alba, you bring everything up to new code standards, which is not financially feasible to bring businesses into the town and say, hey, we have an existing building here, but guess what, you're gonna spend an extra number of X, Y, Z to bring it up to code because it was built in the 20s, you know? And it gives us some historical aspect that we get to deal with in it, which is nice. The biggest thing within the existing building codes that goes with the IUBC is the alteration percentages and that's what we're looking for more than anything, is to get those alteration 4, and 2, and 3.
I was worried that having a hard line might help the people contracting though, saying, hey, you have to bring this all up to code before I can do the job, but it sounds like it's worded in a way that really benefits also the person doing the work along with the business owner.
And the use of the building. You know, it's imperative to understand when you talk about building codes and fire codes and mechanical plumbing, electrical, residential codes, these are the minimum code standard requirements that you have to meet. This isn't more, we can't go less, it's the minimum. And I think when people understand that this is, yeah, there is thousands of pages of books over here that you have to read through to do something, but you know, that's the job of the city inspector, hopefully not me for much longer, but that's the job of the city inspector is to bounce through that and give his best opinion on the whole deal. That's the reason why we have board of adjustments and people don't like it, they can take it and, you know, let some other people look at it too. And that's why we adopt commentary also, you know, that it's already written saying, hey, this is exactly what it means. So you and me may think it seems different, but there's actually commentary that tells you exactly what it means, kind of like an arbitration hearing.
So it's more straightforward?
Yeah, more straightforward, easier to read that way. So, any other questions?
If we, if we take action on this as is, when does it go into effect?
30 days of publication. And if you don't, if you do, wait until another meeting, you'll have to publish and then it becomes effective on...
Kelly, I think 30 days based off of demand and material, it's probably gonna be just fine.
Because it's based on when they begin the project, correct?
Right. They can submit building plans, we don't have to, generally when somebody submits building plans, depending on the size of the project, I try to turn them back out in 14 days through plan review and sometimes you can go back and forth and, you know, catch some wording, language, measurements, different things like that, or densities, concrete, you know, piers, different things within the building construction side that you may go back and forth with the architect a couple of times or the engineer a couple of times if it's structural. 30 days in this incident, I don't think's gonna hurt the project on it because we'd still grade it underneath that.
So if we were to approve this tonight, they submitted building plans tomorrow, you would look at it under the IUBC guidelines with the expectation that construction would be beginning?
Yeah, the IUBC would come into play under that percentage of...
They would just have to wait 30 days?
They'd have to wait 30 days, once the code becomes into law and to ordinance then, then we sign off on the building permits.
Have they already submitted or have plans?
No, they're just right now getting back with their contractors for engineering.
So they're, I mean, probably almost...
Probably 30 days in, out of the way.
We'll publish this week in Sunday's paper, so...
That would be my recommendation, best option, it's all different now. Obviously, some of these businesses have tried to promise that it's gonna be on there like, I mean, if we, I'd actually go ahead and be approved because it'd kind of be more of good faith that we're doing it, yet we just have to take the little final step to get it to be enacted.
No, absolutely, and I didn't, don't want to make any mistake. I wanted it approved, I just didn't want it to be approved too late to help some of the businesses out, so... Any other questions on this? Any other questions? If there aren't any, we'll consider a motion.
I motion to vote on the item...
You're gonna have to...
How about I just second somebody? I vote to approve the item that we were discussing currently. Discussion on action adopting the International Existing Building Code, item 9.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Dowling and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve ordinance number 2021-001 adopting the International Existing Building Code. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Dowling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
All right. This is gonna be good for Alba, I'm glad we did that. Item 10 is discussion and action to contract with Heartland Medical Direction for Alba EMS medical director services at $100 per month. Randy, I owe you an apology on the last agenda item, I did not let you present that.
You did well.
I am going to have Brandon Sherman present this item.
Currently, Alba EMS is under a direction from Dr. Ledford. That direction is at no cost, but it also gives us no benefit. The EMS director, Julie, has presented us with the option to go with his new medical director and I will let her present the information about that because she can give more specifics than I can.
Well, other than me presenting it, I will just let Dr. Warden step up and speak about his company. This is Dr. Warden. He is the head of Heartland Medical Direction and would be our medical director if you guys approve this tonight.
Thank you. So one thing I'll just kind of say, I'll kind of take it back to the beginning, EMS agencies are required by state statute to have a licensed physician as their medical director to authorize the procedures and things that they perform. So one thing that I do, probably different than most, every medical director in the state is I am actively involved. Most medical directors, I don't think Julie can attest to, is they sign a paper for you once a year, once a quarter, and then they never see them, probably couldn't pick them out of a police lineup if they had to. So one of the things that I do is I do site visits, I run calls with crews, we do the quality assurance activities. My company, Heartland Medical Direction, we employ four paramedics that are involved in training through a state grant called ORSERF, which is an emergency system stabilization grant. For the last three years, my company's been awarded that grant and so we get money that helps us come out to the rural areas to provide training. We have a simulation trailer and so in addition to like didactic training, we offer hands-on training. So this trailer is a, it's outfitted exactly like the back of an ambulance, it has every piece of equipment the back of an ambulance has with a fully functional mannequin so that they can practice procedures and things that they normally wouldn't get to do. And so that's one of the things that our company strives to do is to bring the training locally to the agencies that we support. Right now, we have 21 EMS agencies and about 30 rural EMR agencies that we support across 24 counties in Oklahoma. Again, myself and the four paramedics that work for me are on the road basically Monday through Friday visiting these places. So I mean, I would anticipate that someone would be here probably once a month, if not every other month, but then we also do online training. We have a system called Moodle, which is utilized by a lot of universities to where all their medics can enroll online and then watch our prepackaged continuing education, stuff that we do monthly. We also offer training for the fire departments as well and then we offer CLEEP training for the law enforcement officers as well. A lot of the stuff that we do has a CLEEP approval number so that if they attend the training with the EMS, they get the same credit. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's kind of us in a short dog and pony show.
All of that training is included in the $100 a month? Are there's additional charges for that? That's it? And let's say we decided that we wanted our police department or fire department to be involved in that, is there an additional cost to bring them into that?
The police, no, because there's not much training involved there, they just kind of piggyback on what we do. The fire department really depends on what they would want to do. I know we briefly talked about an MRA, Emergency Medical Response Agency, so we'd have to visit that a little bit. The only other additional charge that we've already kind of discussed is right now, the ambulance service has one paramedic, is that right? Who does not have narcotics available. If we moved to where they had narcotics available to utilize, we utilize a non-paper-based system, it's an iPhone app that we pay for and then we then pass along that charge to the agencies. So that'd be the only other charge is if we move towards narcotics. And kind of about the paper, I didn't mention that, that's one thing that we also don't do is we don't have stacks of 1,000 pages, we are paperless. So everything is PDF format, electronic, all of our quality assurance, everything is paperless. So we try to do that as well.
I just, I noticed that it is the $100 ones we're leaving out narcotics. Is that just because we have only one, so we can't utilize that service to the fullest or...
No, that is, that was, it was in the presentation to the Public Safety Committee that it was 100 without narcotics and 150, but starting out, we would, it just depends on where we want to start. 100 is the base fee of it. It's not saying that we can't move to narcotics, we can't add that, that's just...
I know that, you know, moving with the 522 district, the EMS should have plenty of revenue to continue to improve narcotics. Is that adding that fee? Would you say that the EMS agency would be able to benefit greatly from having narcotics or...
It does expand our ability of things that we can provide to our citizens, yes.
Would there be, how many, how many times would you say that that availability would be, would have been beneficial in the past year? I know that, I know that varies wildly from year to year.
I don't know how to answer that one because, I mean, our paramedic works at least 48 hours a week. He's on 48 hours and so that gives us that ability there, but he's also on call for at least another 24 hours a week, meaning if there's a transfer that comes in, he will come in as a paramedic and take that with the narcotic abilities. He, that's something that will be an additional asset for him to have.
Would that improve our ability for some of the transfers from the hospital in any way or by having that availability to us?
It would certainly help because right now, if like, as an example, if a patient's on a medication drip, they'd be able to transfer them. But as another example, if someone has, like, who you don't have orthopedic surgery at that right hospital?
We do not.
So if someone falls, breaks their hip and has to be transferred by ground to Oklahoma City, the Oklahoma roads are nice and smooth, so the person probably doesn't need pain medicine for the two and a half hour drive. Of course, I'm being facetious, so, yeah, so they get nothing except a pat on the back and will be in Oklahoma City shortly. So it would give that paramedic the ability to give them pain medication on that two and a half hour ride to Oklahoma City.
It sounds like the service base is cheap enough, I assume the EMS makes a lot of money from being able to provide that service, that drip to theirs if they can currently, or is that just...
Are you saying that...
The ability to provide that service could help benefit the EMS by allowing them to provide extra services to get income from? Or am I just looking at that wrong?
Would it drive additional revenues?
There's the possibility for additional revenues. We don't do itemized billing, but it does allow, with the addition of that, there's a potential of reaching the secondary level of ALS billing.
It wouldn't affect your billing much, but it might a small bit, the ability to do the medication. It's truly more of a patient care issue, you know, so that they would be able to get, I mean, somebody falls and breaks their leg, even coming into the hospital, the most they can get in the back of the ambulance is a splint and, you know, will be there shortly as to where the paramedic and the drugs that could treat their pain on the scene. So it allows the paramedic to do more. We actually talked about that at the station. I mean, my, my, my recommendation to the council would be just approve the narcotic base now and as soon as the contract is signed tomorrow, we start looking at applying for the OBNDD and the DEA license so that they can get narcotics. We've already got the safe.
Is there a different contract? Because the contract that we had just, was just $100.
Yeah, we could just amend item 7, I think it is, nope.
A compensation, we would just change that to 150 instead of 100 per month and then that would cover the cost of the software we use called LogRx.
The other thing that I was interested on, would you be able to first report to the council on your opinion on the current EMS standard that we have, just so we can just have some feedback on what you think personally and that can help us, I guess, judge how you are seeing by the EMS and how you see the EMS if that's possible.
I mean, it would obviously take us a little bit, I mean, we, I was at the station today, but as myself or my staff comes up and runs calls, one of the things we do is hold an on-scene observation report. So we'll kind of be able to see what they do on scene and how they function and we'll do their quality assurance. So yeah, certainly over time, we'll be able to provide you a report of...
Because I think, as far as everybody in the city of Alba says, that having an EMS is important to them.
Brandon, was there a reason that we chose the $100 over, over $150 or was that...
It was what was in the contract that I was provided in, so that is why, that's why it was 100 over the $100.
I believe in the Public Safety Amendment, we had talked about that, $1,800 a year.
We had discussed $150, but the contract that I had was for the $100 and so I didn't have to take it.
And we could motion with that amended amount?
Does your agreement, when you have the narcotics, does it have an additional section regarding that?
No, I mean, the only thing that's really different, well, there's no, no, there's not any difference in there, is the short answer.
So just need to motion to approve with amendment to paragraph 8 of the agreement to provide for $150 in payment. So I would like to, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate your inputs and everything.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve contract of Heartland Medical Direction for Alba EMS Director Services with an amendment to Section 8 of the contract amending the $100 per month to 150 to allow for the narcotic.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Winters to approve contract of Heartland Medical Direction for Alba EMS Director Services with an amendment to paragraph 8 changing the monthly rate from 100 to $150 in order to provide narcotic services. changing the monthly rate from 100 to $150 in order to provide narcotic services. Is there any further discussion?
Now, are we amending the 2021 budget by doing this? I mean, how do we do that? The $100?
No, that's in this, well?
Honestly, that budget is a guideline, and I, and...
Julie's saying it was factored in.
Okay. Yes. I add that in whenever I submit my budget.
Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item 11 is discussion in action to approve an agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alba. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
To provide a school resource officer for the 2021-2022 school year. This is the same agreement as last year, and this is a service we've been offering to the tech center since 2013. The institutions will pay for this SRO, the specific SRO training that has to occur, but this is largely helpful to the schools to help them, to help law enforcement have a good interaction with students and pretty much curtail some trouble before, you know, it becomes uncurtable. Chief or Angelica, do you have anything to add regarding the contract?
The price the officers receive in compensation is still the same, isn't it? I just remember from the contract, after the original year, it was up into discussion, once it was renewed. But I assume that there's been no renegotiation here?
No, we did, we did not, we did not change that in this year's contract. It was changed two years ago, but it just...
Oh, what is the current amount? To be comfortable?
For the specific officers?
Yes. Oh, okay. It listed the 35.55 as the original agreement year, and then it was negotiated on a contingency after that. So, I just was making sure that we did keep with the original contract.
Yes, I see what you're asking. Yes.
Technically, that was the contract from two years ago, when it was last adjusted.
Motion to approve the agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alba to provide a school resource officer for the 2021-2022 school year.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve an agreement with Northwest Tech Center in Alba to provide a school resource officer for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 11 is the discussion in action to approve, oh, it's 12, 11 ago. That was 11. Item 12, discussion in action to approve an agreement with Alba Independent School District to provide a school resource officer for the 2021-2022 school year. Same thing as with the tech center, just for Alba Public Schools.
And the, yes, Alba Public Schools, they have 14 hours, as close to Northwest Tech only has two hours. So, it's a total of 16 hours per day to officers.
I'd make a motion to approve an agreement with Alba Independent School District to provide a school resource officer for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve an agreement with Alba Independent School District to provide a school resource officer for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action to dissolve the pool task force and create in its place a funding advisory committee. Mr. Sherman?
Pool task force was created to basically get the engineering for the pool and discover what was necessary to either repair or replace. That task has been completed, and the report has been submitted to the council, as presented last time. The Parks and Building Committee would like to see a second task force created, or an advisory committee created, to not only discover grant and private funding sources, but also to create a budget for the new pool.
And some of those have agreed to stay on?
Some of the task force, the original task force, have agreed to stay on. There will be additional members added, just due to the scope of work that's probably going to have to be done if we want to get this thing up and running anytime soon. So, but that will be left up to the mayor to appoint.
Do we have a timeline on when we, form that advisory committee?
We form it tonight, and then appoint members at the next, next possible opportunity, I would say. So, you know, anytime we form a task force or committee, I take suggestions from the council members. I also take volunteers from the community as into consideration for those positions. And so, you know, if we approve the task force, to create the task force, or, excuse me, the funding advisory committee, then we would take steps to put people in those positions.
Is there a recommendation for the number?
Seven was recommended.
Seven is recommended.
How many are coming over with the old committee?
Four.
Well, that's not determined.
Yeah, I mean, it would be determined at the point at which they're requested, or they're asked.
So, four people are attempting to seek?
Four people are seeking continuance, yes.
I guess, just the idea of splitting the four, if, if all four knew one again, you could have an alternate opinion of the other four, so that we'd have some of the new and some of the old in each space. But...
My goal along is to have consensus, so four and four really isn't a win.
That's, yeah.
Three-four is, I mean, four-three is not a win, in my opinion.
I would, I would motion to dissolve the pool task force and create in its place a funding advisory committee comprised of seven members.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to dissolve the pool task force and create in its place a funding advisory committee with seven members. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion in action to approve the April 2020, April 2021 OG&E bill in an amount not to exceed $41,794.14. Angelica?
So, this bill is obviously above my spending ability of $25,000. Been in contact with OG&E. Our street lighting bill on average is about $12,000 to $12,500 a month. During the conversion for, to LED lights for the street lighting, OG&E stopped billing us for those lights. I guess, in my conversations with OG&E, they have had issues with getting duplicate bills during the conversion time. So, we had not received a bill for street lighting since the end of October, and so, this bill in particular includes three billing cycles for the street lighting from November 3rd to March 24th, and then plus our regular billing for the month of April for all, all of our other departments. And so, simply because it's above my spending limit, I need to become a fourth city council to be approved. Can talk about the next bill. It's a similar situation. Per OG&E, we anticipate that we will have one more bill that will be, have two months or more in it, and so, we'll probably see this one more time on the agenda.
In our conversation before this meeting, were they able to get back to you with that bill from a separate month and stuff like that?
Yes, so that's what, so they were able to give you the timeframe. So, we, the billing cycle is from 11/3 to 3/24 for this particular invoice, which is three billing cycles, and that's an, on average, about $12,000 per billing cycle.
And that 11/3 to 11 was the billing cycle?
3/24.
Oh, thank you, that's my personal failings when it comes to dates.
I would motion to approve the April 2021 OG&E bill in the amount not to exceed $41,794.14.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the April 2021 OG&E bill in an amount not to exceed $41,794.14. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion in action to approve the June 2021 OG&E bill in an amount not to exceed $33,320.61. Essentially, this is the same thing, but Angelica, what time period is this covering?
So, this is from 3/25 to 5/11. And so, the bill for the street lighting for this particular time period is $22,350 approximately. So, for those two billing cycles, it's approximately $11,000 a billing cycle.
I guess, just because I didn't ask this last time, how much will the current lights be with the new LED ones?
She didn't give me an estimate on that. I mean, obviously, the cost is supposed to be less. That was why we converted to LED, but she did not give me...
Oh, so we have not gotten a bill for this current light?
No, we have not done. I, I would make assumptions, Taylor, that some of the lights have been converted during this timeframe, because the bill is less, they're also on for less, you know, shorter period of time.
Shorter period of time.
Too, so...
How much we are getting from that, I wouldn't say, I guess, the best?
I'd motion to approve the June 2021 OG&E bill in an amount not to exceed $33,320.61.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the June 2021 OG&E bill in an amount not to exceed $33,320.61. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 16 is discussion in action to approve the renewal of the city of Alba Workers' Compensation Insurance in an amount not to exceed $125,314. Angelica?
So, this is our annual renewal for workman's comp. What we used in the budget for this year was $131,552. That's what our premium was for last year. So, our overall premium is going down by just about $5,000. So, our total premium is $125,314 for this year. We do have an escrow credit of $69,293.22. In years past, we have, and we are allowed to take this escrow credit and apply it to our current bill to reduce the amount of the bill, and that is what we've done in years past. We just need to specify that in our motion. That would reduce our overall bill, you know, obviously drastically. I had the math done earlier in my calculator, but I had...
Be about $56,000.
So, and so, I used $131,000 when I put our budget together, but obviously, you know, that kind of sets us ahead for next year's budget, because we're, we're saving not only, not only the $70,000 escrow credit, but also our bill was reduced by about $5,000 as well.
Could you explain where the escrow credit comes from?
So, the escrow credit, so, this is for the 2017-2018 policy year. We had $56,268 in the lost fund return. So, basically, money that we didn't use, it would return back to us. And so, to get us up to the $69,000 amount listed here, is just the interest that was accrued on that account between the time that the policy was put in place and now.
I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the renewal of the city of Alba Workers' Compensation Insurance in the amount not to exceed $125,314, with the use of the $69,293.22 escrow credit as part of payment.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Winters, to approve the renewal of the city of Alba Workers' Compensation Insurance in an amount not to exceed $125,314, and utilizing $69,293.22 of escrow credit to lower the total premium. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Items 17 through 20, we will consider separately, but these are leases on the grass or the surface for these areas of our, that are city property. They are considered annually, I believe, and they are bid out by sealed bid. So, these...
They're two-year contracts.
Two-year contracts.
And they have the ability to extend that contract a third year, if they submit that in writing before the end of the second year.
Okay. So, these have all been through the sealed bid process. These individuals have stated their, is this, okay, did you say that we had errors?
There is one error on item number 19. That was, should, instead of being 17.55 per year, that's 17.55 per acre, and it's 80 acres. Yeah, for a total of $3,400, it makes $4. Yes, I apologize on that.
So, we'll go one at a time through these, but 17 is discussion in action on the approval of lease at the East Lagoon site to Roger Heda in an amount of $261 a year.
Has he been doing this before?
He has not leased these, he has leased other pieces, other properties or other items, but he's not leased these particular pieces of property.
Is this in line with what we've received for in years past, or is this?
No. The, the East Lagoon, no, it's, it's less. I'd have to go pull the contract, and I didn't bring the other, the other lease with me, but he was the only person that submitted a bid, so... It's, it is less than what we've had in the past.
So, we don't have to accept a bid, but he's going to take care of the property.
We use the same, I guess, avenues that we did to get the word out about the leasing that we did before at newspaper.
Yes.
I'd motion to approve the, the approval of the lease at the East Lagoon site to Roger Heda in an amount of $261 per year.
Okay.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the lease at the East Lagoon site to Roger Heda in an amount not to, in an amount of $261 per year. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Item 18 is discussion in action of the lease, approval of the lease at the West Lagoon site to Roger Heda, Roger Heda in an amount of $261 per year.
Motion to approve the lease of the West Lagoon site to Roger Heda in the amount of $261 per year.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the lease at the West Lagoon site to Roger Heda in the amount of $261 per year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 19 is discussion in action on approval of the lease at the Transfer Station site to Tyler Williard in the amount of $17.55 per acre, per year.
I'd make a motion to approve the lease at the Transfer Station site to Tyler Williard in the amount of $17.55 per acre, per year.
in the amount of $17.55 per acre per year.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the lease at the Transfer Station site to Tyler Williard in the amount of $17.55 per acre per year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 20 is discussion in action on approval of lease at the A R C for grass baling to Michael Zimmerman in the amount of $420 per year.
What was the acreage on this one?
It's just, just under 30 acres. And in previous years, it's gone for $210 a year or so.
And make a motion to approve the lease of the A R C for grass baling to Michael Zimmerman in the amount of $420 per year.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the lease at the A R C for grass baling to Michael Zimmerman in the amount of $420 per year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Items 21 through 28 are all appointments or reappointments to various boards and committees within the community. The, all of these individuals, with the exception of Terry Klein, have been serving in their capacities, and they will be for reappointment. Terry Klein is the only new appointment on this agenda. However, he has served on other boards in the past. I have spoken with all of them. They are willing to serve at these additional terms, and they have appreciated the opportunity to serve in these various capacities. And therefore, I am going to recommend appointment or reappointment of all of them, but we will approve them individually. 21 is discussion in action on the mayor's appointment, or mayor's appointment of Terry Klein to the Alba Regional Airport Commission.
Make a motion to appoint Terry Klein to the Alba Regional Airport Commission.
Yes.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Stelling to appoint Terry Klein to the Airport Commission. Is there any further discussion?
Who's Mr. Klein replacing?
Terry Turner.
I guess, were there any special qualifications when we reached out to Terry? Was he the first willing body that has qualifications to say yes?
I like to look for people that have a calm demeanor, unconfrontational, knowledge of what they're dealing with, and.
He was a pilot in the Air Force.
And pilot. And so, yes, I did take into consideration his background. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
22 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Charles Murrow to the Alba Planning Commission.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Charles Murrow to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Sherman to reappoint Charles Murrow to the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 23 is a discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Christie Corneli to the Alba Planning Commission.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Christie Corneli to Alba Planning Commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to reappoint Christie Corneli to the Alba Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Item 24 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Tyler Mance to the Alba Board of Adjustments.
I'd motion to reappoint Tyler Mance to the Alba Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to reappoint Tyler Mance to the Alba Board of Adjustments. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
25 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Dr. James Bell to the Alba Municipal Cemetery Board.
I'd motion to approve the reappointment of Dr. James Bell to the Alba Municipal Cemetery Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to reappoint James Bell to the Municipal Cemetery Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
26 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Jesse Klein, Jesse Klein to the Alba Municipal Cemetery Board.
Motion to reappoint Jesse Klein to the Alba Municipal Cemetery Board. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to reappoint Jesse Klein to the Cemetery Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
27 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Patricia Harkin to the Alba Library Board.
And motion to reappoint Patricia Harkin to the Alba Library Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to reappoint Patty Harkin to the Alba Library Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
28 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Lynn Wilt to the Alba Library Board.
Motion to approve or reappoint Lynn Wilt to the Alba Library Board. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to reappoint Lynn Wilt to the Alba Library Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 29 is discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 O S 307 B 2 to discuss contract negotiations with I A F F Local 3782 Alba, Oklahoma.
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to enter into executive session for firefighter union contract negotiations. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right. I'll ask the council members, clerk, business manager, and council, and chief, fire chief, to study one action on contract negotiations with I A F F Local 3782 Alba, Oklahoma. There is no action to take at this time, so we will move on to item 32, which is new business, and there has not been anything that met the definition of new business come to our attention for consideration. So we will move on to item 33, which is remission inquiries by council members.
Well, I have been patiently waiting for number 33. First, I'd like to say how much I've enjoyed serving on this council. I've enjoyed the City of Alba so much, and I love Ward 3 and all the people that are up there in Ward 3, but after a lot of thought and a lot of prayers, a lot of prayers, I've decided that I need to resign my seat here on the city council. I'm not going to do this. You know, when you get old, you have emotions running everywhere. This has been, and I had to write it down because I knew I was going to remember it. This has been an experience I've thoroughly enjoyed. Oh my gosh. I've learned so much about the city council, about the business this, the business this city conducts. I've learned a lot about people, but it's time that I sit down, let someone younger take over. There are so many ideas out there. You guys, there are so many people in this town that have great ideas, that have great opinions, that are so good that they need to be heard, but they need to be heard and spoken in the correct way. Work it together. The city council is a team. It's a group of people that have to work together, not work against each other. And through the years, I felt that this council has tried to do everything that was best for the city and for the citizens of Alba. I appreciate Mayor Parker asking me to fill this seat when it became vacated, and I appreciate all the people that have voted for me the last two times, and I pray that next, the next person enjoys it as much as I have. God bless all of you. Thank you for your work. Oh my gosh. People do not understand how much work it is. God bless the citizens of Alba. You guys, it's the best place in town, the best place in the world to live and to grow. But thank you for letting me be just a small part of this wonderful city.
You had a good ear on the committee, though, for you to that. Bring a lot of knowledge.
I appreciate it, and this will be my last meeting.
Well, thank you very much for all of the years of your service.
Been a pleasure to serve with you. Been a pleasure to serve with you.
Well, thank you. Guys, I've learned so much from all of you young ones. It's terrible when you've had some of them in class and then you go, oh my gosh.
They're really smarter than I thought they were.
Just kidding, just kidding.
We're not smarter than you thought we were. Mrs. Hamilton, Mary, it has truly been a pleasure serving with you, and we appreciate you taking that phone call, or I appreciate you taking that phone call however many years ago it was now. And, you know, you've given a good example to follow and big shoes to fill, and we're going to do our best to do that.
May I? Really, big shoes I have, but anyway. But, you know, once you get this age and you have your grandkids and so many things going on in your life, and, you know, at this time, I'm ready to travel and not have to say, so I can't be here. So.
Understood, understood. Any other remarks? All right, we're adjourned.
So we have a request for a.
Request for a request. We will not say to the, later. Shelley, will you please call the roll? We're going to call a order of the utility authority.
Martin?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A U A meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It would then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 17, 2021. Approval of claims in the amount of $101,394.42. Payroll expenses of $86,421.29.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion in action to approve Resolution 2021-006, adopting the Enterprise Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2021-2022 as presented.
I'd like to make my earlier remarks that I accidentally made for the 2021-0005 comment. Like, from my understanding of the current place of the A U A agreement with the A H A, it calls for on July 21 pursuant to the annual, July 21 pursuant to the city policies, the transfer to pay for the utilities of the A H A for the homestead is reviewed and approved during this board, and that transfer is approved currently. Am I correct? Or am I wrong about when that transfer, or when specifically that 3.14 clause comes into effect?
Is clause 3.14.
The A U A and A H A agreement, we asked about it during the special calendar.
I don't remember what you kind of talked about.
That's right. Here, I can, sorry, that's the specific agreement.
Here, I'll read it, Daniel. So it says, the party, 3.14 says, the parties mutually agree that the utility payment required herein shall be reviewed annually on July 1 pursuant to city and Alba policy and approval of the Alba City Council. The council shall reference the Southwest Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, the local economy, and similar locally utility rates in determining any adjustments. However, in no event shall the escalation of utility rates exceed 10% during such period.
Are they not billed at the governmental rate?
They're billed at the governmental rate. Historically, they've been billed at the governmental rate. And I guess if that section was approved, I'd like to have it removed so that it can be voted on independently.
To charge them a different rate?
To review if we should.
Well, we don't have, we can't take action on the agreement. The agreement itself is not under, is not on this agenda. So we can't take action on this agreement.
And the agreement is the greater whole, but I would see if we could not even approve this to give the A U A better negotiating power in the future and maybe table it for the discussion.
To not approve the budget?
To not approve that specific item.
The item I don't, I guess it was a part of the budget.
If it is not, then I guess we don't have to necessarily approve.
There's another line item in the budget for the homestead's utilities.
It would be part of the.
It's just part of the utilities.
The utility revenue, specifically speaking. And yet they are on the governmental.
Then can we look at, I guess, the specific line item review for the homestead maintenance, then, during the AUA meeting?
The dollar amount that we have budgeted?
Yes, I was going to say, it seemed consistent with the most recent revenue of the past few years. But if you look to any date prior to that, it is significantly higher than what they have paid in the past, or what the maintenance bill has been in the past. Because I would see that it has grown, you know what I mean? I think at its highest peak, it would last you much to be over 150,000, I think, was the safe get, but I think it might have been close to 180,000 from the bill.
You looking at the actual or budget?
Some actual, yes. Here, let me be more.
Because there were some pretty large, uh, improvements that have been made in the past few years in regards to hot water heater and a walk-in freezer, and I think some air conditioning work and roof work. Uh, that were atypical.
That's what I would say. It didn't look like, but, uh, the previous financial year, we were able to get by with, uh, just under 40,000.
Right, we did substantially less, but I kept the budget consistent with the, uh, consistent with the budget that we approved in the previous year. Um, the only thing that I changed was, I think there was a typo in the previous budget where we had $35 for property maintenance. And, um, obviously, we spent more than $35, so I had changed it to be $3,500. Um, but yes, year to date, we did spend less than that. But in looking at averages and making sure that we had enough money set aside for, um, air conditioner repairs, I know we've got, um, there's something that.
For the whole building needs painted.
That wasn't me.
But that's going to, that would be a bigger budget item than it was.
Yeah. Oh, I just spoke with Carlos.
What?
Last week, or two weeks ago, about an issue, and I can't, I can't remember what it is off the top of my head, it's in my notes on my desk. But there is something that they are currently working on, and so wanting to make sure we had enough funds allocated.
And that's what, I guess, uh.
The doors.
I specifically mentioned that project negotiation, because that is, you know what I mean, when you see, when you extend the financial calendar further than what is laid out in the current budget, you see that a large amount of those, the upswing or the uptick in the amount that's going in there is directly correlated to after that agreement signed, from my understanding of the events. So I think it would be to the council's benefit to maybe back what they're allowed to lot off there to see if we can free up money from that agreement.
Right, if it's over, I mean, if it's over my $25,000 approval, it would come back to city council for.
And either then, it's.
So generally, yeah, generally speaking, if you've got an expense that's more than five or $10,000, I'm having a conversation in finance committee about it. I mean.
It sounds like, uh, I completely agree with the projects. I have heard specifically from staff of the, the need of repair for that air conditioner. So is it possible to exhibit more control by reducing that budget and allowing those larger line items that need to be taken care of at the homestead to be directly approved by the AUA, allowing them to exert a little bit of control and kind of have a little bit of say on that budgeted item? And make sure that we're using that money to the best of our ability.
So, I mean, hesitation for.
So you have to have a basic budget, though? Don't you have, that was the, the basis?
Just because it's in a budget doesn't mean we have to spend it. And if we want to negotiate how we approach items coming from the homestead to the AUA, we can do that as a council at any point in time.
I guess, have we ever budgeted?
If it's on the agenda.
If it's on the agenda, it's not a.
Have we ever budgeted an idea that, uh, we didn't use all that budgeted money?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, this year, this year, yeah, this year, for example, I mean, we budgeted.
But, uh, at the homestead, it would appear that most of the overages of money gets to remain with the AHA and not the AUA.
We don't.
We don't pay them that money.
Yeah, we don't pay them that money. That's bill, yeah, that, the bills come directly to us and we.
I guess to rephrase the question, then, have we ever budgeted money for the homestead that has, they have not used in the past? Because from my understanding, essentially, when it leaves the AUA, it becomes the property of the AHA. Has there ever been a transfer from the AHA to return the money for the AUA?
The budget doesn't give them the money.
The budget doesn't. No, the AUA does not give the money to the Alba Hospital Authority. The AUA does not give any money to the Alba Hospital Authority.
So, for example, um, you know, we had 47, almost $48,000 budgeted in that first line item there, and year to date, we've only spent $22,500. So that money, that 48,000 didn't go to the homestead. Um, it stayed in our budget, and so it's made our budget this year favor, favorable, because we, they've only spent $22,500.
Okay, so that's, I guess, so significantly lower than what was, uh, what was originally budgeted for it, then?
Just about half of what we originally budgeted for that line item we've spent.
And it tells, it sounds like that money's kind of freed up anyway, so, I mean, if we used half the budget last year and we increased the budget to a similar amount, so we can expect that half, only half the budget will be used.
I, well, I mean, I see what you're saying. So you are wanting us to change the budget to be half of what it currently is?
I essentially, I'd like to commit less money so that we can have that revenue freed up for other projects that would come down the line.
What revenue, what revenue freed up?
The homestead one, because like I said.
You don't get homestead revenue. Well, I mean, you get utility revenue. What, what revenue?
The encumbrance. We could lower the amount budgeted for it, because it seemed in the past, they have not used it. And in the past, prior to 2016, like we said in the past, in the past, prior to 2016, the overall bill had been significantly less.
But we, we, we can adjust the budget as, as needed, so.
It's generally easier to, uh, have somebody ask for money than to give it and have to ask back, or, or ask for an item to change.
We still control whether it's spent or not.
We control it significantly less.
We don't, we don't. We have the.
Control it the exact same amount, whether it had a dollar in it or whether it had $200 million. The hospital authority has, doesn't have any control over how this money is spent. Zero. It all comes through council, or Angelica's desk, depending on the amount of money that is being spent. Which most of it goes through finance committee in the first place.
All of those.
So if we were to, I guess my point would be, so if we were able to, if I were to determine amount, a significant amount of money that could be used for another project, uh, say to, uh, I'm working on agreement with the, the Country Club Pool to allow Alba Public School to be able to attend under certain conditions. If we were able to free up money from that, could that money, even though budgeted in that line, could an amendment to that budget adjust that, allowing that?
What? Yeah, I understand what you're saying. The way you're looking at this is, is like, you called OG&E and told OG&E that in your household budget, you had budgeted $15 million for their, or $1,500 for your electricity for the year. But you're not going to send a check to OG&E for $1,500, are you? You're going to wait until they bill you and then pay your bill as you go. So if you only spend $1,100 in electricity, you're not waiting for OG&E to send you $400 back because you budgeted 1,500.
And I guess I would agree with you on most of the business terms, but from my understanding from the municipality, what we are doing is we are agreeing to say, hey, we have this money available to pay for it, pay it, if you need me to pay it. Not, this money is here, we're saying, we have this money available for.
The homestead is, the homestead is the city of Alba's asset.
And I completely agree with that, and I think that it is important. I would fund it, and it obviously needs building maintenance. I think we have overprovisioned the amount of building maintenance for the years prior to what we have seen on the budget, and it has been significantly less in the past. And from, from my understanding, even Angelica has admitted that we have used significantly less than we have budgeted this year. And I think we can make a strong budget to allow you to attempt to make half of that work and potentially not promise you as much, but still reserve the right to give you if you need it.
So where would you, where would you like to steal from if they have to go over that amount?
Well, I.
Knowing what we have coming down the pipe, as Angelica had said, there's proper amount of budget for what they have planned for this year, for what we have planned to maintenance for this year. So if we lessen that budget and they need more money, where in the budget would you like to steal the money later, instead of planning for it now?
You're right. I would not necessarily want to steal it now. Uh, I'm going to go into the specific items that they have budgeted for that building maintenance right now.
You just spent the doors, there's painting that needs to be done.
Actually, we said we weren't going to do the painting because we didn't budget for it this year.
Right, but there's painting that needs to be done.
But that's not this year, that's next year.
Hot water heaters, doors.
And there's some air conditioners that they really need to be replaced.
That's some $40,000 worth of work.
I know that Carlos.
You may not think it is, but yes.
The price was everything, it was everything, isn't it?
That's why, have we saw bids on those, or those just rough estimates?
As it stands right now, so Carlos.
We have paid for air conditioning, so we know what that costs. We have paid for hot water heaters, so we know what that costs. The doors are, are.
Carlos is currently working on that as.
Best estimates with what we have now, so that's.
But that's what a budget is. It's a best estimate of them?
No, we haven't, we haven't paid for them, but she's.
The hospital, the homestead operates off of free, uh, industrial-sized water heaters. They're not whole boilers, but they are water heaters. And so in the past, we have purchased, as the city, the city council has purchased water heaters for the homestead. We have a general idea of what those are going to cost. In the past, the city has paid for HVAC repairs and replacements. And so, based on historical purchasing, we have an idea of what those are going to cost.
Okay, I, so it sounds to me like you guys really set your mind and you got that money planned out pretty expensive for the team.
It sounds like to me they have needs at the homestead that, it, it contractually, the, the city is, is responsible for taking care of. And so if the utility authority contract with the hospital authority is in question, that's another agenda item for another meeting. But if, if you're questioning the validity of the budget request, I can say, as I've said, all I can say.
And I just, looking through it, it looked like before this agreement, it was significantly less, and then went up.
I would tell you that the staff at the homestead did with less last year because of the situation with the city and the finances.
Oh, oh, it was less than 2016 significantly, and then like much more this year than it was in 2016, 2017.
I know.
Maintenance requirements are going to be different from year to year. You don't replace a hot water heater every year, and those are, I, I remember I did call.
In 2012.
I guess, generally speaking, when I have a line item of two years ago, committing almost $200,000 in building maintenance, I would expect it to go significantly down the, the years before that.
So one thing I will say.
I guess I've misconstrued that.
So what I will say, Taylor, is in years past, when we've had our budget retreats, we get together, we discuss the capital improvement items that we are going to do. In some of those years where we've had higher expenses, we have planned to do projects at the homestead. Um, we've repainted, we've remodeled some areas, but those all went through a city council discussion where we talked about those things, and those were the capital improvement projects that we determined were appropriate based on what, what we had.
I was going to say, there's no line items for capital improvement for the homestead, are there?
There are capital outlay, I mean, capital improvement as far as.
Uh, the general donation fund for the homestead, it doesn't matter. I appreciate your guys' time, but it looks like you guys aren't willing to consider this budget item long enough, so I appreciate it.
I entertain a motion or further discussion.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2021-006, adopting the enterprise fund budgets for fiscal year 2021-2022 as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve resolution 2021-006, adopting the enterprise fund budgets for fiscal year 2021-2022 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winter?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Item six, discussion and action on the water main extension to Alba High School project to, or discussion and action to award the project to True Solutions LLC of Woodward, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $128,280.
Uh, so the, I would know, or I would assume many of you know, the high school is remodeling, uh, their old locker room facility into art room facility. Um, when those, uh, plans were presented to Chief Miller, um, it was determined that the fire hydrant flow that is currently there, um, and it would serve the high school is not adequate in the event that there would be a fire in that facility. Um, the school went to the Board of Adjustments and requested a variance, um, allowing them to do the fire hydrant work at a later date. Um, the Board of Adjustments denied that request. Uh, so since then, we've been working with the school. Um, there's been a variety of discussion, if we could self-perform, um, the water line. Um, if we, you know, and, and then we could provide, um, the labor to install the equipment for the high school. Um, it was determined, we have a lot of projects going on in the water department. Uh, we have the water lines out of town, we have the offset well, offset well that we have, um, committed to through the REIT grant project. Um, and then just in the summertime, we have a lot of needs as far as our water departments is concerned, that's, we've got more water coming to town, um, more water being used, there's a lot more leaks as a result, just a variety of, of projects going on. Um, and so it was determined, um, that we would bid this project out. Um, when we started putting estimates together for the project with the help of our engineer, um, we were looking at approximately, oh, about $85,000 to do the project. Obviously, in February, we had a huge freeze. Um, that combined with COVID, um, and a variety of other factors has caught, has caused the price of everything to increase drastically. So when we bid this project out, it actually came in at $128,000. Um, so this is to lay, um, 10-inch water line from 13th Street to the high school. This project, as it is bid out, also includes laying the water line and the fire, installing the fire hydrants on the school property. Um, the school will be responsible for paying for the portion that is, um, directly related on their property. There's about $30,000, $30,400 that the school will be responsible for paying because it is on their property. Um, but the total project cost came in at $128,280. So that is over the amount that we anticipated, uh, based on the, on the engineer's budget. Um, when we had originally been talking about the project, we were anticipating the school's cost to be between $7,000 and $10,000. Obviously, that is increased as well. Um, even with the school's portion being paid for, we're still about $20,000, $15,000 over budget. Um, if we proceed with this project, this will get the fire hydrants in place as close as we can to the beginning of school starting so that they can occupy that building. Um, the school does understand that they cannot occupy the building until the fire hydrants are in place. So obviously, they put the new art facility in, they'd like to see it occupied as soon as possible. Um, and we're working within to provide the, the infrastructure. Hope I answered all the questions. There's a lot of information there. Um, but if you have more questions, that'd be happy.
Any idea when the country bill starts?
Uh, no, we haven't, uh, myself or, um, Mr. Myers, we've not spoke directly with them yet. Um, but I know, we've given, uh, 45 days to complete the project.
So we can't consider delaying it until, and to see if the costs will come down for material destruction?
That is an option that we have, yes.
I will say, as, as far as the amount that was over budget was, was a large concern for me. I, I had some conversations with Angelica. Um, you know, I, I do believe it's in the best interest for the school to, to work towards trying to make this happen, uh, as soon as possible. Um, if they're willing to pay their increase, uh, when I was looking at it, I was still saying, you know, we're, we're negative already on our budget. We're already over budget across the board between this project and, and the upcoming project, we're over budget. And so one of the things that she had pointed out is, is we also have that, that $70,000 credit, uh, escrow credit that we, um, approved in the, uh, city council meeting that actually puts us $70,000 to the positive on our budget. Um, and so between that, a couple of other savings on some other projects that we've had, uh, we actually are still net positive, uh, to our budget if we approve this, so.
If we approve this, there's no way to delay it to see if costs come down?
No, we would be accepting the bid as it is if we approve, if we approve this.
Of course, we don't know if, if and when that cost would come down, and plus that would put them basically waiting also.
Or keep going out.
You know, we could wait six months and rebid the project again. Costs could be just as high or higher, but they could go down very easily. Um, but that would be six months that those students would not get to utilize that facility. But, but it would be within our rights, um, to wait.
And my understanding was it, it put those classes, because they actually moved them out, um, early towards the end of last year to get started on it. Um, and it, it was difficult for them to function, from things I've heard, so.
I entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to award the water main extension to Alba High School project to True Solutions LLC of Woodward, as the lowest and best bid in the amount not to exceed $128,280.
Next. I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Stelling to award the water main extension to Alba High School project to True Solution, to True Solutions LLC of Woodward, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $128,280. Is there any further discussion?
Is there any benefit besides just the school and doing the upgrade? I mean, are we increasing? Because what I understood, the lines are small and that's, we're making them, yes. Do you understand?
Upgrade, is it going to help?
Yeah.
It would help other places. Would it help any, would it benefit anyone else in that area?
The school has multiple projects that are coming, um, in the next years. Um, so the, the, the backside of the high school really has no water protection where the larger structures are at.
Yeah.
Um, they kind of have some COVID requirements based off, like the indoor facility off of, um, I guess it'd be church and, um, church and Apache, Apache, Comanche.
So that's going to improve water?
It's going to improve their, their water for anything that they expand with on the high school or any projects or future projects that could be for the, um, football field, if, if in track area, if they decide to do restrooms or facilities down low there, that would actually, uh, help them. But we, we really looked at this of bringing, uh, that hydrant just to the minimum requirement to keep them within that footage, to keep the.
And also help reduce our costs. If we, we had discussed originally moving that fire hydrant closer to the gymnasium, but that would require a substantial amount of flooring, um, a lot more line to be laid. a lot more line to be laid and would definitely increase the cost of that project substantially.
And to follow up with what Greg asked, will it, will laying that line provide future benefit to the neighborhoods that it's, the neighborhood that it's in?
Potentially. If it, and I, I've looked at the, the final plan from Myers Engineering, if that's hooked within the grid system coming down Barnes. If that is, then yes, that larger volume will increase fire protection within that area, which in turn, so those water projects that we do like this, go into evaluation with ISO, which is your, your town's insurance rating. And the more water projects that we can show to increase that, the more points that we get. So it actually helps us in two different areas.
Is any of this line replacing existing line in that area, or is this all?
It's adding, it's adding.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item seven is discussion in action to award the water well replacement of well number forty-six project to Hoffman and U-Bank of Fairview, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy dollars and zero cents.
So this is the, the offset well replacement well that we, project that we had determined we wanted to do for our REIT grant last October. In, in order to qualify for REIT grant funds again in the fall of this project, we need to be completed before we can apply again. We have received fifty-five thousand dollars in REIT grant funding for this project. It did come in over budget. They, the contractor and engineer were able to sit down and along with our water department and discuss some, some changes to what we had originally proposed that would reduce the overall cost of, of the project. So item number seven is accepting the bid that they, that they originally submitted. And then item number eight is a change, a deductive change order that will reduce the cost by fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and brings our project back in under budget for what we had originally planned. Some of the changes increase, or excuse me, include decreasing the size of the hole, the well hole that we are, would be drilling from twenty-four inches to twenty inches. And in turn, allows us to reduce the size of the concrete slab or reduce the size of the building. All in all, this reduces things from top to bottom. Allows us to still stay in compliance. This well is currently not online, and so it meets all the requirements that we would need to, need to meet for D U Q purposes, but would give us excess water on top of what we're pumping for the wellfield as it, as it sits currently. The, the company that built the project has done work in our wellfield before for us. When we have to pull a well, we've had, you know, small things that need to be done in the wellfield, they come in and assist with us. So our water department is familiar with them and feels like they do a great job. I don't have any reason to accept the engineer's, you know, recommendations and accept the project and then accept the, the deductive change order so we can continue forward with this project. You know, we did receive grant funding and I'd like to see us move forward, something that's definitely necessary for our community, especially if we're able to expand businesses and things in the future.
Should also, I think, be added, not approving this, would, if we don't get this project done, we are not eligible for REIT grant funding for the next year?
That is correct. So, you know, that, we applied for, it's, I think you applied for fifty thousand dollars, but like this year, we were rewarded fifty-five thousand dollars. So it would be potential funds that we would not be eligible for, to apply for this year.
And, and this project, as it was discussed and planned, was in an effort to improve the capacity for our community, water availability. And originally, we planned to do three offset wells, I believe. And so this is a, a reduction in scope because of, of budget, or financing availability, or not financing, we had the financing, but just grant availability. So I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to award the water well replacement of well number forty-six project to Hoffman and U-Bank of Fairview, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in the amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy dollars.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to award the water well replacement of well number forty-six project to Hoffman and U-Bank of Fairview, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in the amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item eight is discussion in action to approve change order number one to reduce the cost of the water well replacement well number forty-six project by fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. As Angelica discussed, by changing the scope of the project, this change order will get this particular project more in line with budget.
Motion to approve change order number one to reduce the cost of water well replacement well number forty-six project by fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve change order number one to reduce the cost of the water well replacement well number forty-six project by fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
And the next item is to adjourn the utility authority meeting. We will now open the regular Alba Economic Development, call the order of the Alba Economic Development Authority Meeting. When you're ready, Shelley, please call the roll.
Bowman?
Yes. Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. A trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents, and payroll expenses of twenty-six thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item five is discussion in action to approve Resolution 2021-007, adopting the general fund budget. No. That shouldn't be general fund budget.
No.
Is that a technical error?
Yeah.
The economic development authority budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 as presented. Again, this is as was presented at June fifteenth, at the public hearing. There is no discussion. I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-007, adopting the AEDA fund budgets for fiscal year 2021, 2022 as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve Resolution 2021-007, adopting the AEDA fund budgets for fiscal year 2021-2022 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Item six is discussion in action to award the A R C roof replacement project to Heritage Hills. So the agenda says to Heritage Hills Commercial Services of Edmond, that's the lowest and best bid in the amount not to exceed four hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This item does need to be tabled because the A R C board wishes to award the lowest and best bid based on the, it's on the, not the, what language am I looking for? They did a base bid and then they did a.
An alternate bid.
An alternate bid. What's in the, what's on item six here is the alternate bid. And actually, what was approved was the base bid. And the lowest best bid on the base bid was not Heritage. It was.
Tier one.
Tier one contracting. So this, we can't take, I mean, we could take action on it, action to.
Deny it.
To deny it. But the, the A R C is not supporting this motion.
I don't know if we can do it as a motion to.
Deny it.
Not to accept it.
So I, I guess I would just speak a little bit of that. In conversations with the director of board, how previously we had discussed going to the super lock roof system. But in the discussion today, the board talked a lot about was the, the price difference of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, was it worth spending a hundred and fifty thousand extra dollars to have the newer technology on the roof as opposed to going with existing technology, which is the exposed fastener roof system? And they determined that they would, they felt like it was a better use of the funds at the rec center to go back with existing materials, save that money so that it can be used for a project, you know, used for a different purpose later on. And so that was not what I had anticipated based on the previous conversations that we had had on that board. And so we'll just bring it back to another meeting and get that awarded appropriately.
Will we still be within the timeline to accept the bid by the next meeting, or?
No, we will, we'll likely need to have a special meeting for that. We would be getting close to our timeframe, so.
Okay. So a motion to deny the awarding of the A R C roof replacement project to Heritage Hills Commercial Services of Edmond, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in the amount not to exceed a hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to deny the awarding of the A R C roof replacement project to Heritage Hills Commercial Services of Edmond, as the lowest and best bid in the amount not to exceed four hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any further discussion? Voting yes denies this. Voting no accepts this. Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. There being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you all.